Can you just go to slide 23?
Yeah, these next three slides have the panel composition though from the manufacturer. Happy to share the sheet that we got.
Do you have the actual MSBS reports?
I didn't want to get that.
That's one of the things that we should require for all solar projects from that line. Because there's different types of materials that are used that are less expensive, more toxic than others. And we have to know what is going on in there and then how it can be disposed. And as right now, there's a lot of questions about that. And so I don't see how we move forward on anything without seeing the actual MSBS reports. And knowing that everything in that project is 100% not toxic or hazardous in any way. And there's a place to dispose of everything. So that's just my point of view.
Thank you, Frankie. So to install the panels, when you go in. Do you, any of the soil?
Yeah, topsoil is removed. During the EMA process, we had a requirement to have to put that back at the same time.
So where is the topsoil stored? Because I believe there is a part of the. So where, how is that handled, that soil?
Yeah, that's a good question. I can get back to that. I'm not entirely sure. I know topsoil and subsoil are, they're separated when we do the process, but I can get back to you. Oh, yeah?
Bob Walker with Bono Consulting, the civil engineer for the project. Typically for these type of projects, that topsoil is stripped. Everything is stored on site while it's under construction. And once the racking and all the cabling is put back in place, it's actually just respread right there in place. You would, that's not going to be piled up. It's not going to be taken offsite. It's going to be very similar to the existing conditions, even when the panels are there. They just take the topsoil off just what they need so they can build their access roads, put in the cutting pads and things like that. So it's actually stays onsite. It stays in a relatively similar manner as it already is. And then when a decommissioning happens, once that road gets taken out and equipment panels get taken out, then it will get back, excuse me, get back, respread in the.
Equipment to operate this solar facility. You've also got some generators, you mentioned. Things break, things need to be replaced, maintained. So you, if you go in and you wind up, you have to replace a piano or any other type of material. What is your current recycling plan for those materials right now?
Yeah, so I think we had mentioned this last time too. There's a few companies that do recycling right now. There's not too many. So we're expecting more to come up, but SolarCycle and Innerco are two of them that we would look to use. Plus the manufacturer as well, potentially we'd be able to step in and take those panels.
So it is absolutely recycled, no question about it. Whatever is generated from your plant is, Will County can guarantee that it is absolutely recycled.
For the panels, there's a plan to recycle them. The other equipment, I can't speak to every other piece of equipment that it's going to be recycled. It'll be either re-disposed, reused, or recycled.
So a plan to me doesn't mean a guarantee. And my concern is, so whatever, if there's any debris from your site, where is that debris disposed of? Whether it be, let's say, wires, any type, any product off of the solar facility. You know, this is mechanics involved that you go in, you have to replace or maintain. Where is that disposed of?
Well, it'd be, you know, there's different requirements. You know, there's construction and demolition, waste that can be disposed of in certain landfills. Or there's just general landfills that could take, you know, reuse. So it would just depend on the type of waste you're talking about.
So I'm asking where, which landfill?
We don't have those plans because we don't know what you'd be, you know, what you're referring to. We don't expect there to be significant amount of debris generated during the construction of the facility. Most of the equipment, most of the materials will be inputted onto the site. So we don't expect there to be a significant amount of debris. And I don't know what your other projects here in the county have done as far as that. But if there is a, if there's a requirement of conditions that other projects have followed, we'd be happy to follow those.
So there's going to be debris. Whether it's a little debris or a lot of debris, there's going to be. This is a working site. And my question is, is where does that debris go? Is it going to the Will County landfill?
Yeah, I guess we haven't made those decisions yet. I'm not aware that any special use that comes to you has a debris plan that goes to a particular landfill. But if there is a plan that's been presented, we'd like to take a look at it and maybe we can agree to that as a condition.
So I guess this question would go to staff. I would just like to know, we know that our landfill is filling up. So I, as county board members, I think we need to understand. We know we pay our garbage bill. We know our garbage is going there. But where does the garbage go from projects like this? Do, does it go to our landfill? I would like to know that.
I think a lot of that would depend on which dumpster.
Well.
They rented, from which company they rented it from.
That's what I'm asking. I think it's an important. And we're talking about costs. We're talking about the cost to the consumer. And so I'd like some type of information or plan on that.
Director.
You know, I don't have a specific answer to where, for this particular site. But as Mr. Harky identified at the landfill committee, you know, you have different haulers in the county that take their different types of waste streams to different locations. And it's not something that specifically can be identified for this particular site, this location. Depends upon the type of waste, whether that's recyclable or not, and who the hauler is. And, you know, their financials on what's the cheapest place for them to dispose of it. There's a lot of different factors. So it's not just an easy question to answer.
Thank you.
Chair Ogala, did you have a question?
I don't have a question. I actually have a comment. So I think that unfortunately with the new legislation that was passed in Springfield, that solar companies are being quite bold in deciding that they're not going to meet with the local township. I find that ridiculous. I thank you, Sheri, for bringing that up. I hadn't had a chance to read the entire packet. But to me, that would be a requirement that you would do that. And especially since you're purchasing the land on top of it, that puts the whole property in a different hand than what's typically in this community. So you're a new company coming into Green Garden Township and taking over a parcel, which I know everyone can buy property anywhere they choose. But I think that it's rather ignorant that you did not, you know, meet with Green Garden Township. I think that's something that you should do as well as every other solar farm. Because this is very important. Here in Eastern Will County specifically, where it's very agricultural, we're getting pounded with more and more solar facilities all over. I have three brand new ones coming forward just where I live alone. I live on a farm. I live on an actual farm, not a solar. I live on an actual farm, not a solar facility. So we're not, we are not appreciative of having the entire landscape changed for this. From my opinion, solar has improved in itself to really generate significant amount of money, of energy that we would see this. And I'm a farmer, so we have to have that perspective. But when Green Garden or any other township asks to meet with you, do that. They may not agree, but at least you've met with them, had the opportunity. They've had the opportunity to have you at their meeting and speak with you. I don't think that's asking a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Ogala. Member Mitchell?
All right. So the question is, at the beginning, you stated, you stated that this was a local project, it's locally owned. Where locally? Where's your?
Yeah, so we're an Illinois-based company.
Where in Illinois?
We're based in Cook County, Chicago.
The reason why I was asking that, the reason why I was asking that question was because of what Chair Ogala said earlier was, that's why you didn't feel it necessary, because you're not a part of that community. You kind of, you don't have that, yeah, thank you. You don't have that connection with the community. So I do, I do recommend that you go back to Green Garden and have that meeting with them. And at least allow them to state their concerns with you guys personally. And you guys to make them feel comfortable with being there. I get it. It's, it's going to be a lot, but you can, you can get through it. It's one more meeting.
Thank you, Member Mitchell. Okay, do you have any other comments from your team? Okay, I'm going to invite the public to come speak. So I will give you an opportunity to follow up if there's any questions directed at you. So don't go too far. For the members of the public, I'm going to invite you guys up to speak. But just, just know that if you did attend the planning and zoning committee already, that was a public hearing. We do have your comments in our packet. We have a statement of facts. So the way I run these, I always invite you to come up. You're all invited. But if you don't have anything new that you'd like to bring, then you don't have to, okay? For the sake of time, I know most of you have taken off work or given up something else to be here. So you're all welcome to come speak. But if you've already given your comments at the Planning and Zoning Commission, we do have access to those comments. So if you'd like to speak, you can line the wall over here and we'll get to you one at a time. Please keep your comments to two or three minutes and make sure you introduce yourself. Go ahead. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Mark Sarkisian. I'm the Green Garden Planner. We, we did speak with the applicant. They did come to Green Garden, I'm going to say a number, seven months ago. And we met with them and we showed them in our town hall with large maps on the wall where our comprehensive plan is. Because they were proposing to drop in 13,000 solar factory panels right within beautiful, prime agricultural residential estate areas. We made it very clear, we never saw them again. So that was, that was the first time for the first of their four proposals. And some of the residents didn't know what was going on and then they figured it out later. But the residents never had an opportunity to speak with them because once they saw where we wanted our, that we had a comprehensive plan, we never saw them again. And this is the fifth time in a row that we've had to come to beautiful downtown historic Joliet. But we've also got our own beautiful town hall set up for this. And a lot of the residents, some of them are older and between safety and money and time, can't be here. But we've made wonderful appearances for the last four times. We're here for the fifth time. I won't reiterate anything, but I wanted to clear up he said, she said about who met. So we did meet with them several months ago. I think once they saw their plan, we've never heard from them again. And I think that we're going to be here for another project after this one. So in closing, two things. One, you'll see me here every time that there's another, I'll call him an outsider that wants to take the federal and tax credits, exploit our land, and then exit. And then two, you will also see me here probably first quarter of next year in support of a solar farm in Green Garden with a different company who's worked with us. They've looked at our comprehensive plan. Hey, it might be a few more dollars because I'm a little farther away from the access to the grid, but I'm off somewhere else consistent with the comprehensive plan. So we're not just here anti-solar. You're going to see me here in support of it when it's done what we consider right. Thank you for your time and your support.
Good morning. My name is Nick Chapman. I'm a resident of Green Garden Township. And like everyone here today, I'm in opposition to this project. Again, I'll echo the fact that we are for solar. We believe in effective solar solutions. However, we are against the destruction of prime farm and residential land due to an ill-advised law and opportunistic companies that are out for a money grab, right? So I want to use my time today to address two comments from commissioners at the last, at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on November 20th. The first was in questioning the residential nature of this property. So I want, one of my neighbors put together this nice map. I'll hand it around if you guys want to take a look as I add my comments here. But within, according to Google Maps, there are 40 homes within a half mile of this property. Forty homes. That's 40 families, several hundred people, many of them represented here. All of us will be living within earshot and sightline of 13,680 solar panels. Half mile, 40 families. You open that radius up to one mile, one mile, 725 homes. 725 homes within one mile of this property. That includes.
Chairman Pretzel, can I interrupt real quick? And I apologize. There's a map that's being handed around right now. Do you have an extra copy of that?
I don't, but we can make it available. I will pass it around.
We're going to take that one if you want them to consider it.
Lowell, you okay for them to take that map? You got it. That's my neighbor Lowell put that map together. So I want to just to state that this includes the Gateway subdivision, the Sarah Spring subdivision, Vestana, and Five Oaks subdivisions, along with 125 rural and agricultural acreage homes. In Will County, there's 2.88 people per household. That means over 2,000 people live within one mile of this facility. 2,000 people within one mile of this facility. So I can hardly believe that this is not classified as a residential area. The second point that I'd like to make is it addresses a critique of our community's opposition that this is a NIMBY in nature, not in my backyard. So I want to make it very clear, this is not a NIMBY issue because I believe, and I can imagine that many of us can agree, that a solar power plant with over 13,000 solar panels and related equipment should be in anybody's backyard. Not just my backyard, anybody's backyard, right? This is, there are places for safe, ethical, and sustainable implementation of solar solutions. This site is not it. This is not a commercial property. This is rural property on prime farmland in a developing residential community. So I'll leave you with this. Would any of you like to raise your family across the street from this site? You guys want to buy the properties and raise your family right next to it? All right, so for the 725 families that are forced to, what are they going to do? Thank you for your time.
Good morning. Chair, members of the committee. Mike Schwartz, Director of Community and Economic Development with the Village of Frankfurt. Thank you again for allowing us to come and give comments. I wasn't going to speak this morning, but since our land use plan was mentioned, I just wanted to give a couple of facts about that. Yes, we plan for residential in this area. The Five Oaks subdivision, which is three quarters of a mile west of this subdivision, has houses that ranged for sale this morning from 600,000 plus to 1.2 million. So to say that residential isn't desirable in this area is an understatement. The other thing I'll mention is we have a plan for this area. We plan for industrial. We have places where maybe a solar farm would be considered. You know, I can't speak for the village board. That would go through our process, through a special use process. But our plan, which is only about four years old, has just under 6,000 acres set aside for industrial development. 6,000 acres that could potentially accommodate a solar farm closer to the grid. We have 13% of our land areas set aside for industrial. So we think this is just a bad location for it. That you have a resolution in your packet that was passed December 4th by our village board that was unanimous that they're opposing this. So thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Katie Ressler. I live off of Stunkel Road in Green Garden. And I, my biggest concern in all of this, and has not been addressed to my knowledge, is the drinking water. We are all on well and septic. Somebody had asked some, a question in regards to what some of these solar panels are made of. These solar panels, they displayed some of the sheets, but they can't provide the MSDS, which they may be working on. But just for information, that silicon that's on that list, to produce that, they have to use nitrogen trifluoride, sulfur hexafluoride. Two of the most harmful greenhouse gases in the world. In order to decommission these solar panels, they, these same solar panels that have the silicon has to be incinerated in cement incinerators to burn off those gases before recycling. Not to mention, they said cadmium's not in it, but what about the magnesium? What about the lead? What about the aluminum? All of that's going into our soil that they're replacing the topsoil back on top of, but leaches over time, 20, 30 years, into our water, our drinking water. That feeds my family, my gardens that I feed my family. My neighbors have livestock. They feed their livestock with their well water. Now I, in particular, on my, my particular kind of septic, I carry a permit and I, through the land use department. And I have, through that permit, I have to have a licensed and bonded contractor come out and maintain my septic system. Because the discharge of the water into my property has to be within certain ranges. In fact, I have an environmental laboratory results of my property from that testing that just happened in November. I have to maintain it for the, for the soil, for my family, for my neighbors, for the wildlife. Do they, do they have to do this? I do, as a responsible homeowner, as a responsible resident. I have to make sure it's safe. Do they, are they required of this? Thank you and happy holidays to you all.
Hi, my name's Karen Playtek. I'm the landowner of the adjacent property directly to the south of this prop, project. 10544 West Stunkel Road. For all the reasons she just explained, I'm concerned because this property, literally, the water runoff drains directly into my land and my neighbor to the east. And it runs the entire length of my property. So everything that she just discussed, those are all concerns of mine. I'm on private well. I have animals. I've lived there 22 years now. I did not buy agricultural farmland to be next to a power plant. If they were there first and then I chose to buy, then that's shame on me. But this is just completely wrong. There's reasons why there's zoning classifications to protect encroachment of projects like this and to protect land values and public safety. The other issue that I don't think people are bringing up enough is the lease score for this property. This, this land was 236. Anything that exceeds 225 is supposed to be retained for agricultural use. And an alternative site is supposed to be utilized for a project. So that's about all I have. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Amy Boomsma. I'm a resident on Cousy Road. I'm attending this meeting this morning along with my family to express our opposition to this project. The special use permit being requested today is basically the same as the one that you heard regarding Stunkel Road last month. And you may recall that that permit was ultimately denied at the full county board meeting. And we are grateful for the board members' willingness to listen and to take heart the concerns that many residents raised about the project itself, as well as how Surya Power is approaching it with us. The project being proposed has been said by many people, bypassed township officials and residents regarding our ability to speak into it. Residents have been denied the opportunity to ask questions or simply gain more understanding about the project. Why? Because they don't think that that's important. They admitted as such at the planning and zoning meeting and here this morning, one questioned by that. Mr. Patel kind of gave a very sparing answer that the previous commission's public hearing was enough, you know, to present the proposal to the public. But was it? Residents don't get to ask any of these questions at those meetings. So in reality, it's not sufficient. I believe Surya Power is only interested in getting its permit request rubber stamped and pushed through. They are not interested in establishing any sort of goodwill with the township or its people. If they were, they would have proactively engaged us. And the fact that they are purposefully avoiding us is telling. They know that plonking down a solar facility across the road from or behind homes is not desirable to residents and that we would push back on it. They just don't care what we think. They know that the township has a comprehensive plan that designates areas for commercial and industrial development, which is where a power plant belongs, but they don't care what township officials think. They know that presenting their proposal at planning and zoning was the bare minimum required to seek the approval of their permit request, so that's all they did. Are they here today? Yes, but it's not likely because they care what you think. Please do not reward their lack of community engagement. Please deny their request for a special use permit.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. My name is Mike Dunn. I live right behind where Stunkel facility was going to be, so I still have an interest in this project. So some of the things that I've said before, I'm going to just skip, but there's a couple other things I'd like to go over. But Surya Power has not presented this project to the Green Garden Township again. They ignored the township's comprehensive land use plan again. They've ignored questions asked by the township's highway commissioner. How can we look forward to them being a responsible stakeholder in this community with this lack of communication and transparency, let alone keeping us safe? This is right from their plan. Under the, under the section of emergency services plan, their proposal states, I quote, "This emergency plan provides a comprehensive approach to responding to emergencies that may occur during the operation of the Q solar farm installation." Unquote. Written under inverter fire event, bullet number one, quote, "If smoke or fire exists, procure a fire extinguisher." Unquote. Ace Hardware in Frankfurt, a seven-minute drive to procure a fire extinguisher. Comparing this Q's facility to the Stunkel facility from a couple weeks ago, Q's is bigger, 71.64 acres, with a land evaluation score of 236 out of 300. It's listed as essential farmland. Stunkel listed as essential farmland with a score of 215.9 out of 300. Q shows two wetland setbacks. Stunkel has one. Q's is near residences. Stunkel was, is the same. Q's facility is not compliant with Green Garden Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Stunkel facility is not compliant with the Green Garden Comprehensive Land Use Plan either. Home values will decline. They brought this up as well as the turning point, which is the company you're going to hear from next. The Energy Policy Journal published a study by Lawrence Berkeley National Laboratory that showed significant differences in property values were observed for homes near solar farm sites previously used for agriculture, an average 3% decrease. Unquote. In another study in 2022 by the University of Rhode Island, found that when a farm or forest is developed into solar, researchers found that housing prices within a mile of the solar installation declined by 5%. Now they had real estate people come up here and say, there's no reports of anything of housing declines, housing pricing declines. Obviously, they didn't look far enough, or they're just looking for something that was studied in Illinois, which there aren't any. Couple, just two more items here that came up during all the conversation here. One of the chair, one of the committee people asked about the solar panel waste. I did a calculation. There's going to be 485 tons of solar panels. And talking about the makeup of the solar metals, solar panels, only one of the pages, they said there were three. Only one of them was shown up there. So the heavy metals, cadmium, lead, that wasn't shown. In closing, if there's going to be a solar facility in Green Garden, follow township's plan and locate it in those.
Hello, my name is Alexis Snow. I live in Green Garden Township. I want to thank the board and the staff for listening to all of us and giving us a voice. Several things, I've tried to find any solar plant that has been decommissioned. There is none because this hasn't been around long enough. We can talk about a plan, we can talk about it being reverted back to how it was, all of those things, but there's no scientific proof or facts that it is going to go back to how it was. Everything that needs to be removed, things of that nature, and they just said that they're gonna be putting the topsoil back down. If there is leakage of chemicals and everything else, now that soil is also toxic because they didn't keep it onsite away from these solar panels. One other thing that I found, I've been doing a lot of research, solar produces 300 times more toxic waste per unit of energy than nuclear energy does. So maybe that's in producing them, maybe that's in them working, whatever the case may be, but if this is supposed to be green, making these panels makes up for whatever green that they're providing and the toxicity to make them and also recycle them. Thank you.
Did the applicant team, did you guys want to address any of that before we vote? And do we have any other questions from the committee here?
So I just wanted to address a few things. So the highway commissioner, we did reach out to the highway commissioner and share our plans. We've been, he basically just said we'd get a bond to access the road. And then with the fire district, we also reached out to the fire chief, and they said they don't get involved in any zoning cases. So he basically just said, this ordinance 245, which is what the Frankfurt district uses, and it really outlines the road width, weight limits, emergency turnarounds, and he just referred us to that. We've read through that and made sure our plans adhere to that. And that's really what they do during their process, is when we, if we get a condition use permit, well, during the building permit process, they'll just look over our plans and do a full review. And then apologies for not showing the other slides for the equipment, for the panel composition, but there is no cadmium or lead in these panels. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we do have a motion in a second. Do you want to call the roll on this one?
Destiny Ortiz?
Yes.
Sharon Luquez?
No.
Al Mitchell?
No.
Katie Dean Schlemman?
No.
Julie Barfowitz?
No.
And Chairman Frank Pretzel?
No. Okay, the motion fails five to one. Just a reminder to all of you that are paying attention to this one, that does still go to the full board for a vote. That meeting will be next Thursday, December 21st, right here at the same, same building at 9:30 a.m. It's at 9:30 a.m., the third Thursday of the month, which is next Thursday. Thank you. Number three on the agenda, ordinance amending the Will County, Illinois zoning ordinance as amended for zoning case ZC 23108. United Bank of Crete Steger Trust, number 1478, dated March 31st, 1989, owner of record, Alex Mendelson of TPEILWI563 LLC, agent, and Kyle Berry of Maguire Woods LLP, attorney, requesting a special use permit for a commercial solar energy facility. Variance for number of required mowing from five times to one, a variance for maximum ground cover plant height from 13 inches to 36 inches. PIN number 231518200030000. This is located in Crete Township, commonly known as vacant property on South Nacky Road, southeast corner of South Nacky Road and West Loves Lane, Crete, Illinois County Board District, number three. And I'm looking for a motion in a second.
Motion. Second amendment.
And then I will, Marguerite, I'll turn it over to you for...
Thank you, Chair Pretzel. So this property is just the request before you is the special use for the commercial solar energy facility. While the subject site currently is an 80-acre parcel, the applicant is only requesting the special use to apply to the southern 40 acres, in which if the special use is approved, they would actually proceed to purchase the southern 40 acres to then continue developing the site for a solar facility. Roughly speaking, out of the 40 acres, the solar area would be approximately 30 acres of the site. And with that, again, just like typical solar facilities you've heard, it would be remotely monitored 24 hours a day, every day. The occasional employees would visit the site for nominal maintenance. This particular site would have about 13,780 panels on the site, again, on a tracking system. They would not exceed 20 feet in height at maximum tilt. They would be offset 50 feet from all property lines and 1,000 feet from the adjacent residences or occupied community buildings. And again, every electrical component would be underground except where it would be required to interconnect with common utility lines, which runs to the southwest along King's Road, and there is a transmission line running along the southern part of the property. The inverter would be located roughly 1,000 feet from the closest non-participating residence, which conforms with the Illinois Pollution Control Board, just given that distance and the noise generated from the inverter. A seven-foot security fence would be installed, and then NOX boxes again would be available for emergency access to get into the site. This site would use agro voltaic, so native pollinators and sheep grazing, to maintain the ground cover plant height. And then the Planning and Zoning Commission approved the variances for the ground cover to be 36 inches tall and then only require one mowing. With regards to that, the Planning and Zoning Commission added a condition to the special use request that the, or, excuse me, they did not add any conditions. But at terms of the Planning and Zoning Commission, there were only two concerned citizens that came out and had questions regarding plant height, property maintenance, and then just what the northern 40 acres would be like, which, since the applicant mentioned they were, purchased the southern 40 acres and the northern 40 acres would still be farmland, it seemed to address some of their concerns. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted to approve this special use request with three conditions unanimously, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Marguerite. I'll invite you guys to come on down. Do we have any questions right off the bat from the committee? I'm sorry? Yeah, come on down, and then sharing.
I just have a comment. I have not gotten a single complaint or question about this project from anybody in the, in the area, and, and if you knew the public officials involved, they would be on the phone to me in a second if they had an issue with this. I've not heard from anybody, so I was happy about that.
Thanks for sharing that. And you, Marguerite just mentioned this, but there was one concern, and when he realized there's a whole 40-acre parcel of farmland between his residence and the project, he withdrew his concern. So, yeah, so I, I agree with you. This one seems very different than the last one, but go ahead and introduce yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Kyle Berry. I'm an attorney with Maguire Woods LLP, and I'm the attorney for the applicant, members of the, the committee. And I'm going to briefly, if I may, point out some distinguishing features. As you pointed out, I definitely agree with you that I think this project is different from, of course, the one you've just heard about, and also perhaps some of the other projects that you've seen. I know you've had, had to deal with quite a few of these applications over the last year or so, and let me point out three, I think, significant distinguishing features. As you'll see, when the site plan is pulled up, the first distinguishing feature is that the project is bounded across the road to the, the west by a golf course. So again, it's not immediately on top of anybody's home or any other concentrated use. The second feature that's different has already been addressed by Marguerite. The project has been purposefully set back on the southern 40 acres of an 80-acre parcel because it's farther away from the road and from homes in the, in the community. And the third reason is perhaps the most significant one is that there's a, a road between the project and the golf course that is in terrible shape. It is, it is owned and maintained by the Village of University Park. It's full of potholes, as you will see from some photos, and the project, the applicant will be required to undertake repairs of that road in order to build it and build the project if, if it's approved, and to operate it and maintain it. So that will be, the, the, the general community should enjoy a significant benefit. I, I should say, I think at the hearing last week, it was pointed out that from not just the applicant, but some, from two of the folks who, who commented on the project, that there's a lot of dumping of trash that occurs along this road because it's not used. And I think there's some, I think we heard about some old sofas. We, I think there might even be an, an old boat in the, in the area. And again, the, the applicant will, has already spoken with the, the villages, officials in charge of the road, and will be working with the village if this project is approved to improve that road. Just one final point on the, on the two folks who expressed concerns. One of them, one of the, a woman had some questions about the vegetation. I think that the chair even pointed out that, you know, he, he wouldn't characterize her as an objector. He, he said she's more somebody who was concerned. And there was another gentleman, as Marguerite pointed out, who was concerned about the northern 40 acres, what, what that was gonna be used for. I, I think, as you'll hear, he lives on the north side of the project because it's set back 40 acres, and because there's some topography between where the project will be located and his home, I think it's gonna be, not, not gonna be easy for him to, to even see the project. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Mendelson, who passed out some materials for you, who's going to take you through a presentation that we gave to the commission last week.
Thank you, and I appreciate the time here to speak to you today, Chair and members of Land Use Development Committee. So I'm gonna dive right in in the interest of, of everyone's time here. Next slide, please. So this is a context map here. We're, this is an unincorporated parcel in between the villages of University Park and Crete. Community solar array would be located towards the southern portion of this site. The site itself is about 78 acres. We're seeking special use permit on 40 of those acres, and the road improvement would occur from the intersection of West Loves Lane there and King's Road all the way to the site entrance. And again, this is just the, on the use permitting process, we would still have to work with the Village of University Park on designing the road improvement scope at our cost. So in terms of our process, which I've spoken about a little bit before, part of the reason that we got the opportunity to speak to those adjacent, the couple adjacent landowners who came out at the public hearing was because we weren't able to connect with them during our outreach process. We called, we went door to door, knocked doors, and those couple folks, it was the first time that we'd spoken. One of them I handed the landscape plan to. She was able to see the planting species, and she was happy with the species that we'd chosen out and didn't have any further questions. So it was a good opportunity to do, further continuing engagement. The other landowner, the closest non-abutting landowner to the northwest, actually wrote a letter of support to Will County Land Use for the project. He said that I could read that letter here. It's not that long. Is that all right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. He said, "It's re-commercial solar facility development by Turning Point Energy, letter of recommendation. Dear Will County Land Use Department, I am writing to give my wholehearted recommendation for the new proposed solar array facility proposed at the southwest corner of South Nacky Road and West Loves Lane in Crete, Illinois. I own the nearest non-adjointing residential property to the proposed development. My family and I are unable to attend the public hearing in person and would like to have this opportunity to state my support for the record. As a neighbor, I appreciate the improvement to the neighborhood this development would bring. The improvements to South King's Road, in parentheses, Nacky Road, are sorely needed. For this reason alone, I welcome Turning Point Energy to my street, but more than that, an active facility that provides road improvements and maintenance of the 40-acre stretch of land will also deter dumping of trash, which is prevalent due to the condition of the road and surrounding area. As a construction engineering slash engineering professional, I appreciate that the site disturbance impact will be minimal. Similarly, building and operating this power generation facility will be benign, if not beneficial, to the surrounding environment. There will be no aquifer degradation concerns, no emissions, and the vegetation plan TP shared with me appears to address erosion risks. In conclusion, I would like to again provide my endorsement for the authorization of this commercial solar energy facility development for the good of my community and family. Sincerely, Ty Harvey, Lead Construction Project Manager." He works with Purdue University. Next slide, please. So I thought I would take you down the road a little bit. This is at the intersection of Nacky Road, Kingston's into Nacky, and, and West Loves Lane there. So this is at the start of it. Next slide, please. And then as you drive down it, you can see here how it's this combination of gravel, asphalt, broken up, and that's what it's become over time. It's been like this for decades, I will say. Our landowner, a landowner, trustee of the trust is actually here today. This, this piece of land has been in their family for over 100 years. So we had a good amount of a history, history lesson about this site. Next slide, please. As you get closer to the site entrance, it, it just gets worse. The, the closest to the site entrance photo is, is to the right, where you can see these pretty deep potholes that we would improve at our cost if this use were approved. Next slide, please. So this project has some benefits that aren't just onsite or about utility bill reductions or tax revenue increases or pollinators. It's also about improving the surrounding environment, improving a road that, on Crete Forum, people talk about driving down. During the course of my outreach, I spoke with the Village of University Park, with the Village of Crete, with Crete Township, with the Crete Township Highway Commissioner, and all seemed for improvements to the road. Next slide, please. And this is, this is the actual onsite improvement. What's reflected here is our, the panels themselves, but then we also had a sit-down meeting with the Crete Fire Protection District, which would still be the Fire Protection District for this area, and we made improvements to the access road that goes in between the parcel and, in order to give them comfort that they could get to the pieces of the array that they would want to get to. Next slide, please. We also, like we do for every project, did a glare study. Those residences to the southwest, you can't see them from the road, but we analyzed them anyway. I think, believe they're around 1,500 feet away, and then the closest one is to the north, just about 1,000 feet away. No glare was observed at any angle. The site also has natural screening that runs around on the west, south, and east, and, and north. Next slide, please. So like every project that Turning Point is doing in Will County, we will do a conservation plan, working with the Will South Cook Sun Water Conservation District. We've begun that process. Chris has begun that process with the district, and we'll continue that and do that with this project as well. Next slide, please. So just to summarize, I'll highlight some points here. I said no glare. There'd been improved adjacent roadway, improved site soil quality and area drainage. We can get into more details about the hydroic nature of the soil and what the proposed plantings would do for that, if there are any questions. There'd be no long-term traffic. We wouldn't be using any water or sewer. There'd be no permanent parking. We'd be complying with noise standards, no emissions, and we've made sure to engage with the Crete Fire Protection District and incorporate the recommendations into what you're seeing before you today. So that concludes my presentation. I would welcome questions, and I would greatly appreciate your support for this project.
Thank you. Member Berkowitz?
Thank you, Frankie. So...
Uh, so Alex, with that road, um, that, that's a, a great contribution to, um, improve that road. What is the, um, relationship after, uh, construction is completed, then? Is the township maintaining and taking on that road, or do you have continued obligations?
My understanding right now, and we haven't finalized anything with the township, we do have proposals for our engineers to, um, do the, the scoping and cost estimating and things like that, but my understanding is that we would have to maintain that, um, for the life of the project.
Okay, and, and so, and there are residences that, um, are along that particular roadway? Are, are they, or, there's no driveways along that roadway?
No.
Okay, so you'll, I would imagine then you'd also be responsible for snow plowing and things like that, and if you have to maintain it.
I, I would have to look into the regulations about snow plowing, sorry.
I bring that up because, you know, let's say there, there was a situation and we needed emergency vehicles to access the property.
Oh, yes. Yes, we would, we would have to make sure that there was continued emergency access to the site.
Yeah, as well as during winter, you know?
Right.
Okay, so you're, you're going to, um, develop that plan and make sure that all of that is addressed?
Oh, and then we'll have a process with the Village of University Park.
Okay.
But first, we would need...
Yeah. And do you guys talk to EMA as well? I mean, are they familiar with your site and with all of these facilities, the emergency management?
Oh, um, I think that we'll be doing that as part of building permit, and actually later today, we actually have a pre-application meeting with Will County Land Use for the projects that were approved here. So those kinds of questions, we're going to ask because we want to know who we're going to be speaking with as we go through that.
If you did, if you made that part of your process, we would be really grateful for that.
Okay, absolutely, yeah, we'll definitely speak with them.
Thank you.
Thank you, EMA.
So Alex, I have a question for you. We've talked about this on a different project, but something that I think would make a big difference is, uh, and you tell me how hard this is, but to open up the, um, the ability to tie into the discounts associated with the, the project, how hard is it to open that up to people within a, you know, two and a half, five miles or whatever of the project for a period of time before it's open to everybody else?
Right, so we actually, uh, committed to a one-month exclusive, I'm going to, I say it's a marketing period because what happens once a community solar facility is built, it actually, leading up to the operations, is that, um, there's a company that gets sign-ups, that goes out and gets sign-ups, and the first people to hear about it are usually the ones who sign up first. And so in the city of Sandwich, Illinois, we committed to a one-month exclusive marketing period in Sandwich. So the mayor there wanted us to make the benefits accessible to seniors, uh, people of low income, um, and veterans first. Uh, and so we committed to, uh, go, uh, have the, the company go to, uh, places that seniors congregate, uh, low-income buildings, uh, and veteran centers, um, to make them aware that the community solar is able to sign up, um, first, to keep it blocked from anyone else for the first month, and, um, and then only then to open it up. And so in terms of making sure that local residents experience the five to, it can be as much as twenty percent discount, but usually five to ten percent discount, um, we could commit to, uh, an exclusive marketing period. You know, to date, uh, we haven't, uh, indic, Village of University Park, Village of Crete, hasn't indicated that they want that yet, but, uh, you know, if that's a requirement of the Village of University Park's process, I think we'd be open to that, for example.
I just think it's the right thing to do, right? The people that are directly impacted by it should have first dibs on the discounts.
Right.
But I do like that you're also able to do it for seniors and veterans before maybe opening it up to everyone else, but I'll stay out of that. It's just my opinion. I think it's the right thing to do. Uh, I would like to see you guys do that on all projects.
Okay, yeah, and, um, you know, we make sure to do that, asking in outreach first. So one of the, we had conversations with Village of University Park and Village of Crete, and it's just about factoring in, you know, each locality's desires and weighing them, and, yes.
Cheryl Geller?
Thank you. Alex, I was wondering, um, after you guys go ahead and make the improvements to that road, why wouldn't the Village of University Park do the maintenance and snow plowing on that? I mean, it's, it's their jurisdiction, isn't it?
It, it is managed by the Village of University Park, but I here cannot commit to what the Village of University Park, uh, will do.
Right.
That's why I'm just trying to be careful with my commitments. I can say we will, um, pay for the cost to improve, um, but we, it's the start of our conversation process with the Village of University Park. We see this process as the first step, and that will enable us to discuss with the mayor and trustees, um, and village inspector as well about things like that. So if I can just reserve that...
No, that's fine, and, and you have two board members. Sherry Newquist is one of the board members that represents that area, as well as Dan Butler. I would reach out to both of them because they should become actively involved in getting University Park to, to do what they, in my opinion, their responsibility. We have helped them in the past with improving a road of theirs as well, uh, the county has, and, um, then they should maintain it after that fact. So I hope that Sherry and Dan would get involved and reach out to both of them, that they can also have those conversations. I appreciate you guys doing that, uh, road improvement. I know the, I've, I saw the same letter. That was, the, uh, person in support was greatly appreciative of that, too.
Right.
So thank you for that.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And I wanted to say one more thing. I, I have a background in different types of, of land use development, and, you know, sometimes when a developer improves a piece of ground, they also improve the ground next to it, and that's, so there's precedent for, for that, um, and, um, we're happy to do it in this case.
Thank you. Any other questions from, yep, Member Mitchell?
Yes. Okay, so my question, well, a couple of questions. One is, I just want, wanted to make sure that this will not be a private access road. This access will, this access road be...
Correct.
Okay, and the next question is about my dear wonderful sheep. I, I love sheep. I think they're awesome. I am not, I, I'm not sold that they'll be out there taking care of the grass forever. So I just wanted to perhaps, is there something that we could say in, in whatever that says, okay, if the sheep don't, don't show up, or if our sheep contractor, you know, decides he wants to leave for better ground, it happens in Illinois, um, what is our contingency plan? I want to make sure that if sheep isn't going to be out there, some lawnmowers will.
Right, I think, um, we wrote that into our, uh, landscape plan, but I'm going to, if Chris could answer that, because he's the...
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Chris Wilson, uh, landscape architect, Kimley Horn.
Thanks, still love sheep, yeah.
Thank you very much for your time and great question. Um, yes, whether the area internal to the fence is used for grazing or as sort of a additional pollinator habitat zone, it will have to be maintained the rest of the, as the rest of the site. Um, so we have in our maintenance and monitoring notes that, and, and you guys do have the notes in front of you. It says, um, "In maintenance, we'll be mowing and/or grazing."
Got it. Okay.
That's it.
I'll be... Thank you.
Do we have anybody from the public that wants to make a comment on this one? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
Please state your name again.
Mike Dunn.
Thank you.
I live in Frankfurt. I just want to address just, just the panacea of, of solar facilities. I know there's a big edict from Washington that will be self, self-reliant on energy. That's been passed on to all the states. Pritzker signed it. It's also been signed in Michigan the same way, within the last couple of weeks. But like I said, this is a panacea for its technology that still has a long way to go. It's a Band-Aid for now, but what happens twenty, thirty, forty years from now? So this, this is an article, "The Dark Side of Solar Power," written by the Harvard Business Review. It addresses, it addresses some of the waste. So it's estimates of eighty to one hundred million tons of solar panel waste globally by 2050. As a result, solar's production boom has left its recycling infrastructure in the dust. To give you some indication, First Solar is the sole U.S. panel manufacturer you know of with an up-and-running recycling initiative, which only applies to the company's own products at a global capacity of two million panels per year. With the current capacity, it costs an estimated twenty to thirty dollars to recycle one panel. Sending that same panel to a landfill would cost a mere one to two dollars. This article is dated June 18th, 2021. So there may be more solar recycling facilities online right now. I didn't have time to review all of that, but Turning Point did, uh, address the, the tearing down of their facility, where they showed the metal, the, the panels and all of that, but they also said that all the, all the deconstruction basically would fund itself because of the scrap costs of what they would get on the return for all that. Now, I don't know about anybody here, but when I go through, when I've been in subdivisions for big scrap day, all the guys out there picking up scrap metal don't have brand-new trucks. There's not that much money in it. So we all have to keep this in mind as, as well. And, and one other comment with that, with the Michigan, because they did it, there, I read, there's a county in Michigan that also has a moratorium that they enacted on these solar farms until all this stuff can really be figured out. I don't want to tell anybody how to do their job, but that seems like the right way to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have one more comment you wanted to make? Alex?
Yeah. So I believe there are one thing, uh, state citing, two, there is recycling, and then three, property values, so I'll go in that order. Um, we didn't, Turning Point Energy did not support the state citing bill. Our approach to development has been community engagement first, and that hasn't changed since the state citing bill was passed. Um, our citing process also hasn't changed. There are sites in Will County, um, that we will not propose solar on because, uh, we don't think that they would fit within the comprehensive plan that a jurisdiction has, for example, or, um, the jurisdiction has told us that they don't want to see solar somewhere. So, um, we, we, we believe that, uh, development should be done with communities, not to communities. Um, on recycling, we're following this very closely. Uh, in fact, there is a state, uh, law that was passed earlier this year establishing a, our recycling task force to study this very issue in Illinois. The findings of that, uh, task force will be released in 2025 by the state, so not, not soon enough, so we're following it privately as well. Um, actually, just this morning, uh, EDP Renewables North America, um, it announced that they're working with eighteen different leaders in the recycling services sector throughout North America, and so it's a nascent industry, um, but there's one company that was mentioned. Um, there are more that are coming, um, and so that's something that we're following very closely, and, um, we are going to make our best efforts to engage with that, um, when the time comes. And then the last was on property values. Um, this, I, I realize that the, um, person commenting was not, um, was speaking generally and not about the specific case, um, but at the Plan Commission, we did have an appraiser, uh, speaking about this specific case, who did show examples from Illinois that cited no property value impacts. Thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl Geller?
Yeah, thank you. I just forgot to ask, and, or maybe I wasn't in the room. Uh, is this a purchase or a lease project?
This is a purchase.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, will you please call the roll? Oh, did we not make a motion?
Second, Mitchell. Okay. That's okay. Okay. Uh, Destini Ortiz?
Yes.
Sherry Newquist?
Yes.
Rachel Mitchell?
Yes.
Katie Dean Schlotman?
No.
Julie Berkowitz?
Yes.
And Frankie?
Yes. Thank you for your time and, uh, appreciate the opportunity to speak to you all today.
Yeah, thanks. Motion carries. Thank you, guys. Um, number four on the agenda, Building Ordinance Requirements for Pre-Manufactured Accessory Storage Space, amending the Building Ordinance Code 150 dot 030. Building requirements, section International Residential Code R7031 dot 1. Water Resistance 150 dot 070, and section 150 dot 070, exception 1. Uh, do I need a, a motion for a public hearing on this? Is that, so I'm looking for a motion to open up public hearing?
Motion Ortiz.
Motion Ortiz, second Dean Schlotman. We are now in public hearing. And I see Owen. Looks like, uh, he's ready to, ready to go.
So as we did, uh, last month, we were discussing the, uh, pretty much the, it's, um, changing the exceptions from two hundred square feet or less to two hundred and fifty square feet or less for the detached accessory structures, the weather-resistant barrier and the concrete support, and that's pretty much all we're, we're trying to do here.
All right, thank you, and thanks again for all your work on this. I know we've been talking about it for months. Do you have any comments from the committee? Y'all clear on what this is?
No, I'm not confused. What are we doing? We're doing the same thing, or...
Well, we're, we had to have a public hearing for it, so this is just opportunity to... We, we changed it to, um, we made the, um, structures up to two hundred and fifty feet before they would need a concrete slab. But this is the public hearing. Do we have anybody from the public that would like to comment on this, or any board members? Any questions? Any public comment? Okay, um, I, oh, Julie, sorry.
No worries. Uh, I'm just going to, uh, share this, that I'm, I'm basing my vote based on conversation that I have had with people, um, in the construction industry, and, um, it seems to be felt that a two hundred-square-foot building is large enough and it's not unreasonable to, um, want to have that securely anchored on a concrete slab. So to jump from two hundred to two hundred and fifty feet, I have a lot of concerns with that, so, uh, just want to share that, and, and I've come to that conclusion only by talking to people who are in, who, this is their job. This is what they do. So, um, I just, we had that conversation in a prior meeting, and I just wanted to, um, remind everyone, and thanks for letting me share that.
Thank you, Julie. Any other comments on this? Looking for a motion to close public hearing?
Close. Second Ortiz.
Please call the roll.
Destini Ortiz?
Yes.
Sherry Newquist?
Yes.
Rachel Mitchell?
Yes.
Katie Dean Schlotman?
Yeah.
Julie Berkowitz?
No.
And Sheriff...
Yes. Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Uh, first up under other business, Preliminary Plat Extension Approval for Denler Unit Two. Cherry Hill IAD LLC, owner of record, Denler Inc., developer and Nathaniel Washburn agent, requesting to extend the effective period of a preliminary plat to allow the development of a six-lot industrial subdivision. PIN numbers 3007134000350000 and 3007132240030000 in Joliet Township, commonly known as Vacant Property on Cherry Hill Road, Joliet, Illinois. I need a motion in a second.
Second Dean Schlotman.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Brian, do you want to, uh, fill us in on this one?
I'll just give you a very brief summary...
to allow the development of a six-lot industrial subdivision. PIN numbers 3007134000350000 And Joliet Township, commonly known as vacant property on Cherry Hill Road, Joliet, Illinois, need a motion in a second.
So move Mitchell.
Second Dean Schlotman.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Brian, do you want to fill us in on this one?
I'll just give you a very brief summary. This committee approved the preliminary plat and final plat for this Denler subdivision months ago. With the final plat, they did not record it within 30 days, and that's an ordinance requirement of the subdivision ordinance. So because they did not record it, the final plat, within 30 days of when this committee approved it, it now makes that an invalid approval. And the preliminary plat needs to be extended in order for them to come back and submit the final plat again to have it approved by this committee, and then hopefully record within the 30-day period. So we're basically backtracking to where we were before. If the committee is okay with extending it, it will be extended for one year, and then they'll have to bring back the final plat application, which this committee will see again. And then if you do pass that, they'll have 30 days to have that recorded, and that will be the end of the process then.
Thank you. And I do see Mr. Washburn is here, if you guys have any questions or anything. But I think we could probably just go ahead and call the vote on this one.
Yep.
Any questions from the committee? Okay, you can call the roll.
Destinie Ortiz?
Yes.
Cherry Newquist?
Yes.
Cal Mitchell?
Yes.
Katie Dean Schlotman?
Yes.
Julie Berkowitz?
Yes.
And Chairman Frank?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Brian, do I need to read number two? Did we, we're postponing this?
So staff was working with the engineering group that was designing the creek-crossing minor plat of subdivision. They were hoping to get all the signatures in time for this meeting. They weren't able to do that. The engineer told me that it should be ready for the January land use committee meeting, so if we could just move the item to the January meeting, it should be ready for approval then.
Okay, can I get a motion?
I have a question.
Second Ortiz.
Motion, Mitchell, second Ortiz, and then we have a question?
Yeah. So this is the parcel where they're putting two homes. They're dividing it into two properties.
That's correct.
There's no change in that.
No, there's no change.
Thank you.
Do you want to do a previous roll?
Previous, oh, wait, we're not voting.
To postpone it till the January meeting? A previ, sorry. I forgot who made the motion. Well, it matters who makes the previous roll. Okay, previous roll, Berkowitz. Second, Newquist. All in favor? Any opposed to postponing? Okay, motion carries. So we're going to postpone that till the January meeting. Then amendments to Chapter 55 Stormwater Management and Chapter 164 Water Resource Ordinances, a discussion under Certified Communities and Exemptions. I know Chair Ogala asked that we bring this, oh, no, I'm sorry, that's. Yeah, what are we doing with this one? I forget.
So this is a discussion item only today, not asking for any formal approval of anything.
Just a discussion.
The reason this is here on the agenda is that IDNR has inquired about the county's permitting process of Will County DOT projects. And the county has a long history of not issuing site development permits to the Will County Department of Transportation. The reason for that is the County Department of Transportation has a professional engineering group design a project, then they hire another professional engineering group to review the project for Will County's adopted ordinances and standards, along with every other rule and regulation that they have to follow for the design of roadways. So the Will County Stormwater Management Ordinance controls things related to floodplain and site development and things of that nature. And within that ordinance, there are certified communities, which almost all of Will County's communities are certified communities. And what that's saying is that those communities will adhere to the minimum standards of the Will County Stormwater Management Ordinance, and they don't have to get a permit from the land use department. The Will County Water Resource Ordinance is pretty similar to the Stormwater Management Ordinance, except there are some more stringent regulations in that ordinance, just like another community adopted the Stormwater Management Ordinance as the base regulation. Each community in Will County could have more stringent regulations if it wants to, if they want to adopt that in their community. So what staff is suggesting to address this issue, and it's something we've been talking about for a while, but I think now may be the time again to look at this issue and deal with it, is that there'd be some sort of exemption granted to the Will County Department of Transportation by identifying them as a certified community. That's one way to solve the issue, meaning that they're going to attest that when they design a project, it's going to be done to the Stormwater Management Ordinance standards, the Water Resource Ordinance standards, and they wouldn't have to get a permit from the county. And that would close that issue that IDNR has presented to the county. I did, I mean, that's a very brief summary of the issue. So what we're looking at doing is getting the reaction of the committee here and coming back with some language that would address that issue at the next storm, or, excuse me, the next Land Use and Development Committee meeting. I do have Bruce Aderman here. He is the county's chief subdivision engineer. He's behind me. I believe that many of you haven't met Bruce yet, but Bruce is behind me, and he could address some of these questions as well. He has some experience in what other communities do, and we've talked about this a little bit. But if you wanted to ask him any questions, he's here as well.
Sounds good. Essentially, you're just looking to codify the current practice that's been the practice.
Correct. It's been the same procedure that's been going on for 20-plus years as DOT reviews, their engineering group that they hire reviews the plans that were prepared by somebody else. And when they design those plans, they are done to the Stormwater Management Ordinance and Will County's Water Resource Ordinance requirements. They're attesting to that. It's just that we don't actually issue them a site development permit for that work.
Yeah. Bruce, do you want to come introduce yourself? And then, member Newquist, do you have a question? Oh, I don't know if I can.
There we go. So I just want to make sure that I'm understanding this. So IDNR is concerned because land use is not issuing Department of Transportation a site permit?
That's correct. IDNR has brought the issue to the department, saying that you should be issuing a site development permit for Will County Department of Transportation work. And that's something that this office has never done. And in the 20-plus years I've worked at the land use department, that's never been the procedure. Will County Highway Department or DOT has always reviewed the standards to make sure that, reviewed their drawings.
Right.
To make sure they're inconformist with the regulations. But we didn't hand them a permit for it.
Right, we don't do the permit because we're not evaluating it for compliance. They're hiring somebody to do that.
That's correct.
So if we actually make them a certified, you know, entity, we can then, in fact, issue them a permit without, based on their attesting that they're following the standards?
Yeah, actually, we wouldn't, well, the way I'm discussing it, we wouldn't, we don't issue them a permit now. We wouldn't issue them a permit in the future. There's other counties that do the exact same thing that I'm talking about right now. King County does something similar. Champaign County does that. There may be others. I'm not familiar with all of them. But they recognize that DOT is a group of professional engineers and that it's being designed correctly, that they don't need to review the project, just like we don't review any work that Joliet does. They have a certified staff of professional engineers that are reviewing and designing projects. So the county is not going to issue them a permit because they're attesting that they're following these rules.
So they have an accept exemption because they're attesting, and you just want to put Department of Trans, Will County Department of Transportation in that same category?
Correct.
Oh, yeah, I'd say do whatever you got to do.
Yeah, I agree. Matt, did you have something?
Yeah, I have a quick question. Brian, when you said that these other communities are doing that, what are they doing? They put DOT as a certified community?
Like in King County, I don't have the exact language in front of me, but that's what I would bring back next week. Bruce had, I've done a little bit of research, and they've identified that their Department of Transportation is a certified community. So they don't have to get a department from the King County, you know, planning department or something like that.
We agree. You good, Matt?
I think, I'd like to see that, that what they come back with.
You know, today is discussion only. So we're just bringing it up as an issue to try and close that loop that, you know, IDNR is, you know, presented to us as, you know, something that they're concerned about.
Yeah, in theory, because obviously it makes them an exempt community. The question is, I'd like to see the language of that.
I wouldn't, yeah, I wouldn't say it makes them exempt. It makes them not have to get a permit.
Right.
They still have to follow all the rules that have been adopted by the Stormwater Management and Water Project.
All right, I get that.
Being in the office, we get many phone calls.
Can you hit your microphone?
The office, we get many phone calls from different municipalities doing work, and they mention to us all the time that they follow our water resource ordinance. So they don't come to us for permits, but they do follow our ordinances.
Yeah. Member Berkowitz?
Thank you. So do we know why IDNR had a concern and felt they needed to follow up with us and add this additional burden?
I mean, it would really only be speculation. I mean, they
Why?
Have a relatively newer person in that role that has taken a different approach to managing this area that's under their jurisdiction. So with a variety of different issues, they've been working with communities to suggest ways to administer the regulations in a way that, you know, they see more appropriate.
Yeah, you know, my concern is we don't need to fix something that isn't broken, and we don't need to bury our staff, especially our DOT, who I think does an exceptional job, especially lately in my district. We're very happy with the recent road improvements in the area. So again, you know, my concern is someone's coming in, telling us to make these changes and putting some additional burdens on one of our departments, so.
Well, Board Member Berkowitz, I would say that really we're not asking them to do anything different than they do right now. We're just writing, putting it down in black and white on a computer screen to make it clear in the rules that they're just doing what they're already doing. And we're just putting it on.
Right, I understand that, but just requiring the permit is another process.
Yeah, I mean, it's
No matter how easy it is.
Well, when you think about it, we're not asking them for a permit, and that's why, you know, we're trying to clear this up, is that they do not need a permit from the land use department, just like every other certified community in Will County doesn't need a permit from the land use department.
And I agree with that. My comments were directed at IDNR, so thank you.
We can eliminate a redundancy here, I feel like, so. Chair Ogala, did you?
Yeah, I just think that I'd like Matt to look at it further, just to make sure, because DOT does hire out to do the road projects, just to make sure that we aren't missing something that could potentially cause an issue in the future. So since it's just discussion, if Matt can look at that in the ordinance language and have that for next month, that would be great.
Sounds good to me. You guys okay with that?
Certainly, we'll review any suggested or recommended change with the state's attorney's office, and we could bring some language just for discussion next month. And then this committee can determine if they find it's appropriate or suggest changes. Then we can worry about going to public hearing in future meetings.
Sound good? All right. Thank you. Last, number four under other business. An update on the Land Resource Management Plan, as requested by Chair Ogala. Colin? Oh, sorry, Bruce. Did you want to at least say hi? Hold on one second, Colin. We want to hear from you.
Oh, definitely. Well, I'd just like to say, I'm Bruce Aderman. I'm a consultant with Baxton Woodman, also the chief subdivision engineer. So happy to work with you.
We're happy to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, back to Colin.
Yes, we've got the RFP in purchasing right now. That just came back from the state's attorney's office, and now we're just coordinating the timeline to get it out onto the street.
Any questions from the committee on that? Sure? All right. Thank you, Colin. That concludes other business. Next is reports, communications, correspondence. I don't have anything today. Any comments from committee members? Director, do you have any comments or?
Sounds good.
All right. I would like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. I do support that. Do we have any public comments? Chair Ogala?
Yeah, I just want to follow up with that Land Resource Management Plan. So when the RFP goes out, will you guys come back to us and say it went out on December 29, and it's due back on January whatever, and this is what, that's all. I just want to follow up with that. So where we're going with this. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. We don't have any need for an executive session today. All right. Looking for a motion to adjourn? Move Mitchell. Second Newquist, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, our next meeting is scheduled for January 9, 10:30 a.m. Same bad channel? I don't know what to do with myself.